Alright. Alright, so I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the governing board, our study session. The time is 6:30. All board members are present. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries 5-0. Alright, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is a study session, a review of Deer Valley's social, emotional, and suicide prevention programs. The reason why we put it in the format of a study session is to give parents and community members the opportunity to speak to the board, to ask questions, to make comments. I would like to start off with a review from Dr. Galligan. I think it would be helpful for me as a board member, and I hope for others, first to see where we've been, look at what we're doing now, and then where we'd like to go going forward. And I'd just like to say very quickly, I do know that there are parents and community members here who have thoughts, questions they'd like to share with us. So generally, in a study session, if you could come forward to, that's probably the most convenient mic, or raise your hand and give me the opportunity to have you come forward, tell us your name, and then your question or your comment, or your thoughts, is probably the best way to go about this. And then, of course, board members will also have questions and thoughts they would like to share as well. So, board members, just please be aware that I'm craning my neck right now, and I still can't, the sightlines from this table are not the greatest. So, just please be patient if I don't call on you immediately. It may be that I didn't see you raise your hand, or didn't see you come forward, but I will make sure that everyone has the opportunity to ask their questions, share their thoughts, or say anything that they would like to say during tonight's study session. Alright. So, Dr. Galligan, if you would start us off, please.
President Frank, members of the board, Dr. Finch, and guests. Before I start, I'd like to just share who is sitting at our table. We have four of our psychologists with us, Dr. McLaughlin, Dr. Orahood, Dr. Casava, and Dr. Sanders. And we appreciate them taking time this evening to be part of this conversation. I would also like to share that Denise Derry, who is our lead district counselor, who represents our districts for middle school and high school, also is here as well. And then, we are very glad that one of our great partnerships through Southwest Behavioral Services, Mr. Ed McClelland, who is the Vice President of Community Services, and he works with school-based counseling programs as well as prevention, is here also, just to be a part of this conversation. Dr. Zierbach has his team here, and I'll ask him to share that out, who's here with him right now.
Good evening, everyone. So, I have here Scott Warner, and I have Jen Minor from the Administrative Leadership and Services Department. And so, they'll be joining us as well as we have our conversation today.
And then, I would also like to introduce Paula Tunis. Dr. Tunis is also here as part of this conversation. She works with our campuses as well. What we would like to share, you all received on September 20th, just an update of the five areas where the district has worked since about 2016 on training and information for certain staff members. As you may have read, we focused a lot on our counselors, our psychologists, and our principals. So, that is a great deal of the initial training that has gone on over the past two years. And that information led into some of the work that we've done with threat assessment, and the changes in that area, and then others. You have that information in front of you, so there is a document that looks like this. And Pages 3 and 4 have that information that was in the Thursday update. The first two pages, however, are the ones that I would like to focus on right now. We have been working as a multi-department team to identify how we can better support needs through our social-emotional learning, as well as suicide ideation programs. And what you'll see here on this page is three areas. What are we doing immediately, which is this past summer and this fall? Where are we short-term, which will take us through spring of 2019? And then, what are our plans for long-term, 2019, 20 onward? So, with that said, I'm going to touch briefly on a trip that we just participated in, Dr. Tunis, Dr. Zierbach, Jenner Moffett, and myself, to the Midstates Benchmarking Consortium. And their focus that they shared with us was specifically on social-emotional learning and a five-year plan that they have in place. They are now in year five of that five-year plan. And also, the work that they are doing with suicide ideation. Illinois has an epidemic also with suicide in youngsters 10 to 18, and so, there are many districts that we met with that are working on this. So, some of the things that you will see on this plan are things that we had been working on prior to our trip, with the Midstates Consortium, but then also, what we were able to glean and pull together that we know we're going to be working on both immediately and short-term this year. I'm going to have Dr. Zierbach share some of that, and then I will return and share some more.
Is the timeline available on the website, or for people who are here who haven't seen what we're looking at, the training? Is this information available somewhere for community members?
It is. It is truly available for...
Do you have it?
It's available for our board members. We can certainly get additional copies.
Yeah, just because we're having a conversation, we invited them, but they probably have no idea what we're talking about else.
I think it's also on board docs, or they look at board docs. I think it is there for them, so they can...
Yeah, it is in board docs for the public.
Okay, so, if we take a look at the first page, and for those of you who have it now, so we'll start with the immediate. As Dr. Galligan explained, the immediate is really from the summer up and through now. And so, the first piece that's there is with respect to suicide ideation. So, Jen Minor, who again is part of our department, she did a lot of work along with others who are here at the table as well, to make sure that procedures that are in place with respect to suicide ideation are clear, and that there has been training to the administrators and to other support staff that are on the campuses of our 38 schools. We also have started some monthly dialogues about social-emotional learning, and so, those are at our level meetings. Those happen once a month. And at those meetings, we talk about how students are doing. We have some reflection time for the administrators to share with one another about what is happening at their schools with respect to social-emotional learning.
Doctors, Zierbach, could you explain what a level meeting is to everybody, please?
Absolutely, thank you. Yes, so, our level meetings, I had that question too when I started, so what does that mean? And level is the level of the actual school. So, if it's an elementary, it's an elementary level. If it's a high school, then it's a high school level meeting. And so, we separate those groups into two separate meeting times when we meet with them. Okay, so, 1C on leveraging the grant and title funding, so this is new for our district, and so, we have a social worker that is with us now, and that social worker can provide support to our schools with respect to the wraparound services. And we also have a PBIS specialist who works in Paula's department, who is supporting the schools as well with our positive interventions for our students. We also have, 1D is a big one for us, that is a safety summit. Now, technically, that would be part of our short-term plan, but in terms of the immediate side, it's our planning, okay, about that. And so, Scott Warner, over here, is leading the charge on that and planning a day specifically for the high schools right now. And some of those topics are stated there with respect to what he is planning to cover. Scott has been in communication with our high school principals with respect to what is most in need for our staff. And so, some of those pieces, again, with respect to suicide prevention, and with respect to student wellness overall, are some of the topics that have been highlighted. And so, Scott, do you want to talk a little bit about that in terms of that day?
Sure. The really idea came from the idea that our staff and our students are sort of the actual first responders if there's any sort of incident. Now, also, first responders when it comes to mental health in the classroom or suicidal ideation. So, what we're trying to do is for our teaching, our teachers, is to create a safety summit where we can bring that information to them. The safety summit would feature a keynote talking about the role of teachers in making a school safe, tailoring a presentation to our teachers in regards to suicide, signs of suicide, and signs of mental health crisis, and give them the tools to identify that sort of thing. And then, the final part of our safety summit would be the Stop the Bleed Program, which is a nationwide program that teaches people to stop bleeding, is literally what it says, through direct pressure and tourniquets. And it gives, we like it because it gives people an option, an option for action. We think that's an important piece for folks who might be at the front lines if ever something that would happen. What's nice about Stop the Bleed as well is the application throughout one's personal life, whether you're hiking, or in a car accident, or a bike accident, you may be placed in a situation where you need to stop bleeding emergencies immediately. So, we're hoping to bring it to nearly every high school teacher that we can on that day, it's a half-day summit, so that's really kind of our idea now that we're putting together.
I have a question for Mr. Warner. So, actually, you sort of answered it, what grade-level teachers are you targeting, and you said high school. What about our middle school and even our intermediate grades? Because, thinking back to my experience as a classroom teacher, and I taught 4th grade and 6th grade, we had cutters in 4th and 6th grade.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I know of students who had suicidal ideation in middle school. So, what is the plan to bring that information down to those teachers? Because typically, you know, again, when I think about my time in the classroom, who would be most likely to know first that a student was having difficulties? It would be their friends, and then the homeroom teacher or teacher they trusted, not a social worker or a counselor, someone they didn't see regularly.
Yeah, we absolutely believe that's what's going on for our teachers, that we put them in a place where they can identify something, but they're not really knowing what they're identifying. So, we're starting with high school because that's the age group that's highly concentrated. It's not to say that the other age groups aren't involved, it's highly concentrated in high school. So, we're starting there, we're seeing how that works, how successful we are delivering this message. And then, if we are, then what the folks we're working with will create more information and a presentation tailored to our middle schools, and tailored to our K6 schools. And so, that's, we're working with people who are creating this for us. And so, we're very hopeful that if the high school summit goes well, we can spread it to our lower grades as well.
So, then, the initial safety summit sounds like it's somewhat of a pilot, and then it will be, the information will then go down to the middle schools and to the K6s from there?
Yeah, we want to look for feedback, of course, so we can adjust it.
Right.
Because we think it's good information, but, you know, we need to hear from the folks who are going to go through it to make sure that it is.
Okay.
Excuse me, what is the proper protocol for this in terms of like a workshop and questioning? How, what is the appropriate means for me to ask a question or to respond?
Just raise your hand. Yes. Please state your name. I don't know all your names. I know your faces, but...
Okay. LeAnn Hall, I'm the CEO of Andy Hall's Sunshine Foundation. And so, my question to you is, same basically that was asked, was posed, if you're, if we're going to be doing something that's for high school, do you know what the statistics are for 10 to 14-year-olds right now for suicide?
No, I don't.
Okay. This is why it's so critical that we not try, it is the second-leading cause of death, second for 10 to 14-year-olds. So, for us to be addressing high schoolers is missing the opportunity right now that's at crisis mode. The, are you familiar with what the CDC statistics that just came out in September are for suicide?
In regards to age groups, or...
In suicide in general, the CDC for the United States, where does suicide rank in terms of deaths, in compared to like cancer and other types of deaths?
Oh, I don't.
Okay, so, up until this last year, it was 10th. As of September, suicide is now the leading cause of death in the United States. So, this isn't something that we can do test trials at. We really, we really need an urgent, let's jump on this, and let's start at younger ages as well. High school's great, but, you know, I'm hoping that we can really do something, not avoid the younger ages because it's so terrifying for us to talk about, which I understand. That's just my thoughts for the moment.
Okay. Thank you for sharing those. Did other board members have questions? Okay, we have another community member.
My name's Christina Nguyen, I'm with Project Connect Four. I've got two questions. So, as they're talking about the procedures and the protocols, so my first question is with regards to students who are at risk. How are you tracking those students? And then, if those students transfer schools mid-year, or go from like elementary to junior high, junior high to high school, how are you tracking those kids to make, if they are at risk, that the next school is aware of that? And then, also, for children who are at risk, who are potentially maybe at an inpatient treatment facility, they are getting treatment outside of school and are coming back, what's the transition for them coming back in as part of those process and protocols?
Dr. Galligan?
If they're within our boundaries, then if they're part of one of our system's sister schools, and it depends on who is going to be, you're wanting the information to go to, we use log entries in what's called, in our power school system. So, as long as they have been documenting within that, and it depends on what kind of, what we're saying is a high risk. Are we saying that they've already had the suicidal ideation, not the hospitalization ones, but ones that have just talked about it? The new forms that we have are going to be following the students in their CUM folders. Of course, that's a new process that we put in place this year. But again, it, the level is very different, and every single student's going to be different. And there's a lot of times, and I work at a high school, there's a lot of times that we don't always know that a student has come back from hospitalizations because parents don't always tell us, or they haven't given the hospital a release of information to talk to the school. So, we're also sometimes left out of the loop, and then all of a sudden, we happen upon it, and we're like, oh, okay, well, this is good information, we should probably have this now, and then we'll move forward with it. So, that's generally how, they will transfer part of the CUM folder if it's now part of the new process, and then in our log entries, as long as they've been in our system. If they have not been, every school district is very different, they don't always send stuff, and unless the parents share, we don't always know.
I guess I would just add with that, too, if that opportunity comes around, also bear in mind, and I don't know your process, but look at offering 504s, potentially IEPs, chronic illness type of form, back with social, emotional, ID, depression, that kind of thing, they help them continue to be successful. That may be part of the conversation with the parent.
And I believe Mrs. O'Brien has a question.
Actually, Mrs. Frank, I have a request, just so, I, and just a request so the board members can decide, but it would be really helpful for me to be able to hear from our staff all the information first, and then hear their questions so that I can get them in context, because much like many people in this room, we also are learning, so if I can, we can make sure to hear from everybody, and then maybe ask questions at the end so that we make sure we can completely understand it from the district's perspective. That would be helpful, if that's not objective enough, problem with everybody.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Warner, you were presenting information, did you have more to share?
Well, I just wanted to make the point that...
Okay.
The safety summit is just bullet point D in our plan that we're putting together, and that's why we're starting with high school in regards to that. But, you know, that's, that's our, that's where we can gather the most in one auditorium and make that happen, so.
Okay. And thank you very much, Mr. Warner.
I'll keep going.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you have the sheet in front of you, then we're looking at 1E, and so, continuing on, there are discussions that are planned with agencies such as Southwest Behavioral, and so, we are looking to see how we can maximize the support on our campuses from Southwest Behavioral. I know that currently, they are on several of our campuses, working with some of our students, and so, we want to see, again, how can we leverage that partnership as much as we can to support our students. And so, more conversations will be ongoing with Southwest Behavioral and other agencies like that.
Sure.
Yeah.
What your partnership is doing with us and our children?
Yeah, my name is Ed McClelland, I'm the Vice President of Community Services for Southwest Behavioral Health, and we're one of the primary provider of behavioral health services in Maricopa County, and even in the state of Arizona. You all raised some very important factors and issues regarding behavioral health services to kids. And my interest, and I've been with the, with Southwest for a number of years, 40 to be exact, 40-plus, I know I don't look that old, but, anyway, my interest be, and I'm also an ex, not an ex, but an educator as well. So, behavioral health services in schools is a very challenging and difficult process. Schools are, have become the recipient of education and a lot of the other things that go on in our communities and in our society. But the coordination of care, the early onset interventions with primary and care, and even middle school kids is, and you're absolutely right about the suicide-related issue, it's a major concern, it's a major factor, I'm sure you've heard about, you know, some of the situations in the East Valley and the clusters of suicide. So, but even the, the coordination of care is important as well, because you do have students who go into the hospital, they come back to school, and no one knows about it. And then, we say, episodes of the illness sort of creeps back again, and it's a vicious, it's a cycle. And so, so we've, we're pleased about our partnership with Deer Valley. And a matter of fact, Southwest is involved with 24 different school districts and about 145 schools in Maricopa County. So, school-based mental health service is not new to us, we've been doing it for a number of years. But it's a difficult process because of the confidentiality issue, the stigma associated with mental health. So, those are all things that we're trying to overcome, and it's becoming more publicly visible and aware that speaking, people are speaking out about issues that are concerned because we believe in comprehensive care and coordination of care, and looking at comprehensive service delivery. And to come into a system where that's not their primary focus, it takes some challenging kinds of things to make that happen successfully. We're in 10 of the schools with, here in Deer Valley, and believe me, it's, we are excited about our partnership, we're looking at things, early intervention, we're looking at primary, we are talking about some primary prevention diversion kinds of programs. There's a lot to be done in the field, and we're looking at the coordination of care issues. We're a primary provider of behavioral health services in Arizona, as I've mentioned, and we offer an array of, from, from community to schools to, we are, we don't have an inpatient, we do some residential treatment kinds of things, but we work with kids and families. And so, we don't see kids, we don't give any consent to parents and that whole process. So, it is a challenging piece, but it is something that's needed, and we're working with the district to try, we have, we're involved in 10 of their 38 schools right now. There's a licensed prevention, not licensed therapist on each of those campuses that provides services in. And we're a licensed behavioral health provider of behavioral health services in the state of Arizona. And we're, we're working with the district, as I said, to provide services to those individuals who are enrolled. They're usually enrolled through access, their health plans, and we have access to providing them with the needed services. We're also working with the district, not only to serve kids who are enrolled in access, but to serve any, any child that attends that particular school, and working out a funding mechanism and ways that we can provide those services to those students as a, as a behavioral health agency. And it's not, it's challenging, and it's not the easiest thing, but we certainly don't turn kids away from services. And we make sure that if we can't do it, that they're linked and provided some form of care that's needed. So, and that's, that's challenging for us as a primary provider of behavioral health services, but we are committed to doing that. My boss, the CEO, is committed to doing that, and with the resources and services that we have, we are working with those schools districts that, that we're, you know, providing services in, and we're trying to work through the challenges that we're faced with day-to-day on how to make those services consistent and meet the needs of those kids and families.
Okay, and I believe Ms. Tweedy has a question.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just, I was trying to understand what services you're providing. So, are the schools referring students?
Right.
And then, if they have, if they have access, they get services through your agency, but if they have private insurance, then you find?
Right.
And so, how many students, and how long is the wait to get these services?
Well, we, which, we, in our reality, we don't, we're not supposed to have waiting lists. And we see kids based on getting consent from, from parents, kids who are referred to us either by a parent or by the school district. But we, we ask that when kids are referred to the therapist that's on their, on the campuses that we're all involved with, that they, we get referrals, but that they have the consent of the parents before we see them, and we have to have that.
So, right now, if, if this...
I'm just trying to understand how these services work. So, right now, if a counselor at any of our schools could refer...
Only at the 10 schools that we're in. We, when we started this process, I think we're in our third year working with the district. We, Dr. McCluster contacted myself and Allison, who is my program director, and they were interested in getting, they heard about us and the work that we do with school districts, some other school districts in the valley, and they wanted to have counselors on the school campus. And at that time, we were, we only had, I think we had three therapists that we were willing to provide service, or to locate on within the district. And we identified, I think we identified five schools to begin with for services at those five schools. And I think they were identified as a result of, of need in those particular schools. So, they were schools that they felt that would need or benefit mostly from, most from the services. So, we, we worked out a plan to provide the three therapists that we had available, and with the intent that we would, that those, we would be able to maintain those individuals as a result of being able to provide a combination of access-eligible individuals, along with private pay and other kinds of funding sources that we could provide services to those students.
So, the students at those 10 schools can get services without a wait?
So, what we did was to introduce our process for enrolling students in the, and to see, to be seen through Southwest. And so, we take, we handed all of the enrollment process for getting those kids into services, as long as their parents consent to that being a service provision on...
No, I understand the whole consent process. I understand actually Southwest well.
Okay.
I was a foster parent for years, I know a lot of foster, so I'm surprised about the no wait. So, at the 10 schools, those students get referred... So at the ten schools, those students get referred and through the school program, if a student gets referred regardless if they're private insured or if they're insured through access, they can get services with no wait? That's what I'm understanding, as long as their parents consent.
As long as their parents consent.
Now what about the students at our other schools that aren't one of those ten schools? How do those students get counseling?
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, actually last year, Southwest also provided services to a couple of our other campuses that had a child in crisis. So we were able to reach out to Southwest for that. Rather than, than that though, our counselors are our best resource for identifying students and then providing them with the resources or where parents can go to seek help. And, and I don't know, Denise, do you want to add to that just a little bit?
So, so yes, you have it right, Ms. Tweedy, that if you don't have the therapist on your campus, we don't have access to those therapists. So if a student comes in or a parent comes in and they're, you know, in crisis and if it's not where we've called a crisis hotline number and the crisis team has come in and they're asking for resources, then it's generally, if you're on a seven through twelve campus with kids that have a counselor, the counselor will have resources to be able to share with the families. Our K sixes don't have a counselor, so unfortunately they don't have the same set of resources. More than likely, they probably go to a school psych and the school psychs are the ones that are probably providing information or support if you're on a K six campus.
Okay, please do.
I'm Dr. Sheri Ora and I'm one of the school psychologists in the district and we actually can refer students. I am on Desert Mountains campus. We do not have Southwest on our campus. I also are part-time at Boulder Creek High School, which also does not have Southwest Behavioral Health on the campus. On both of those campuses, we have had families that are in crisis and there is a referral process. We have been able to refer students on both of those campuses to a Southwest Behavioral Counselor at Goldwater High School or at Deer Valley Middle School. And so we obtain parent consent and we can forward that information to the district office and so that way those parents can have access to the Southwest counselors even though they are not on our campus. It does require the families to travel to that other campus in order to receive the services, so that is a bit of a barrier. And we have been advised that if the, if the families do not have access, there is a sliding scale in which they can receive services through Southwest.
Right, that's true.
I have a question. Are we back to where we're able to interact and have, ask questions or are we going to go through the material all at once? Because I have questions, but I was, it was suggested that we weren't going to do that. So which is it? Are we, can we ask questions or are we going to go through all the material?
Do you have a preference, Dr. Finch?
Yeah, I think sometimes if people have a question, if they aren't allowed to ask at that point, then it gets off track, so.
Right, a couple of the, a couple of folks have to leave, so a couple of our experts. So I wanted to make sure that the board got all the information for what we're doing at the district level before they had to leave. So that's what I was thinking of, going through the information first, that was my thoughts, because some of them have to leave.
Well, and I have one concern. I'm looking at the clock, we have an hour and we're not even through a quarter of the first page and so are we going to sit here and then we're going to talk, talk, talk and then it'll type up, no time for any questions or conversation? Because we're here to speak specifically, I, I have thought, regarding suicide prevention. And we're talking about social emotional programs and counseling and foster kids being counseled and those are, these are all very important topics, but they are, they're not suicide prevention. You know, we do bloodborne pathogens, we do CPR training because you have one chance at it. You don't get a second chance at preventing a suicide when it's completed. So I guess if we can really kind of go through this, what we're going to do and then actually get to discussing because we can read the report.
Right, and it's not the purpose of a study session to have people come and then not have the opportunity to interact, so I do understand your concern. I also want to make sure we're honoring the time of the experts who are not able to stay past a certain time. So if we could move forward with their information first and then move back to more the interactive model, I think that would perhaps satisfy everyone's needs as best we can.
My, my, another reason why I think this is important to walk through the whole district plan, I believe that the foundation for all of this is in your culture. I just listened, I was at State Superintendent's Conference and Rick Miller from ASU, professor at ASU, that was his whole point. He's saying that the, that the absence of hope is the number one reason why we have this topic on our desk and it, and the, how you build hope is through your social emotional programs. If you have that foundation, then suicide prevention is, is looked through a different lens, as more of a campus approach, more of a culture approach. So I think it's important, as I mentioned before, as your superintendent, I'm not a reactionary person. I want a plan. I want a five-year plan, I want a three-year plan, I want a two-year plan. So we're marching towards a destination. So that's why it's so important from my perspective that we talk about what we've done, where, what we're learning today and where we're headed in the future. And I think the board will benefit from that and then when the parents can ask us or community members ask us questions, then it makes sense of where it fits. So that's kind of why I think that might be the best way to do it. But again, this is your meeting, so I'm just a participant.
Okay, so who are we hearing from next?
Okay, so what I'll talk about, I'll skip to the last point from the immediate term and so it, the last piece references something that Dr. Galligan talked about at the start. And we did attend a meeting last week with several districts that are very much like us across the US. And so the thing that was apparent that came from that is that everyone said pretty much very similar things and that we were in a similar boat in terms of looking at what can we do to help support both our students and our staff with this. And so the thing that, the first piece there was the consistent one. So I would say of the ten districts, almost all of them either started last year or starting this year with the signs of suicide universal screener. And so they differed in terms of how they administered that with respect to whether it was to everyone in a high school or certain grade levels, but that was something that was very consistent. And so we're looking at that right now as it says, having immediate dialogue. And we are also looking at some of the other educational tools that they said they used in tandem with the signs of suicide in terms of how they provided some of that support. Dr. Galligan?
To add, part of that safety summit, if, if we move forward with signs of suicide, would be the training of our staff because that would be given by our, our teachers and our staff. In addition, when we look at short-term, one of the areas that our high school principals received information and we chatted with them at the last level meeting was the Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life initiative for campus students to attend and that's in January. And so our campuses will be wrapping around children who will be attending that for our high school campuses. In addition, we have Title IV funding and one of the components of Title IV funding is a health and wellbeing section and there is a certain portion of the Title IV funding that must be spent on that, that part of funding. So we are looking at leveraging that funding to put supports in place people-wise, a people support at the five high schools and then supporting our three middle schools. And that's part of what our, our goal is here, which is a five-year social emotional learning plan of which there is a three-year suicide ideation plan built into that. And when you look at, at our long-term, that is what we will be presenting to you more than likely at the July board meeting, is that SEL plan with the suicide ideation long-term. So what we have found is you can't do this overnight. To do it well, we need to, as Dr. Finch said, look at our culture and develop a culture that understands the importance of both social emotional learning as well as addressing suicide ideation face-to-face. It, it has not been an easy topic in the past for our parents to want to talk about or for our staff members to want to take on, but we are past that point now and know that that has to be built into any plan that, that we put together. In addition, we have identified some strategies that we feel we want to look at further and if you look at 2E, how do we begin to reduce anxiety that students and staff face? And so some of the ideas that, that we are looking at is specifically identifying stressors that both students and staff may feel, looking at schedules of students who have expressed suicide ideation, who have expressed anxiety, cutting, that way we'll look at the trends for what our students are taking in school, in class, that might be leading to, to those anxiety factors. Specifically, the number of AP classes. What we have identified through research is that our children who take many AP, IB and honors level courses face higher anxiety, whether it's through themselves or through their community or their parents. So we want to look at that. Also looking at zero period, and you may not think that zero period would be a concern, but it is actually a stressor for our kids that want to take more than they possibly can mentally handle. So looking at that. And then another topic that would not be an easy topic, but also weighs heavily on our children, is weighted grades and that whole ranking system. So when we are initially taking a look at what are some of those causes of anxiety for our teens in middle school and high school, those are just some of the initial topics that we are wanting to wrap around into the plan that we are going to put together. I think overall, our goal is, because Arizona at this point does not have social emotional standards, looking at some of the other states that have moved forward with providing social emotional standards for school districts and utilizing those standards as we look at how we can better leverage what we are able to do within our five high schools, our three true middle schools and then of course our, our K eights and K six schools. So with that, that was pretty much all we wanted to share. And Dr. Finch, you had two other staff members. Would any of our psychologists like to add anything about this topic around our children who are, who are bound with anxiety and who either cut or express ideation of suicide?
Psychologist at Barry Goldwater High School. When we were just looking at this list, one of the things that we were wondering if it's going to be addressed or taken into consideration, social media. So when we talk about grades and we talk about activities and pressures and loads of classes, one of the number one things that we see a lot is the influence of social media on, on all children. So maybe that could be added as a consideration of something that could be addressed. Other questions about, I mean, from before about how we do reentry, what we look at with 504s and those kinds of things if you're, ever that time arises.
Okay, thank you. So if that's, that is the information that you wish to share. So I'd like to open it up to questions first from board members. Mrs. Fisher?
I read through this, I looked through it. I think it's wonderful to have a long-term plan. I think it's wonderful to recognize that we have kids that we have to support because there's all types, we get all types of kids, whether they're come from what appears to be the Leave It to Beaver family to the couch surfing kid that nobody even really knows that they don't have a home to go to. But what I don't see in here is actual suicide prevention. And I get the three-year and adding it into a five-year ongoing plan, but like I said before, you don't get a second chance to prevent a successful suicide. It doesn't happen. Once, once it's done, you know, I had this conversation with my, my son. My son, who's autistic, came home from school talking about different things with suicide and he says, you know, I think I'm just going to die and then I'll just be someone different. And I said, Barry, it doesn't work that way. Well, yeah, it does. Jesus died and came back. I said, okay, Barry, that's something different. Well, there's other kids and they talk about dying. It's okay, I'll just die and come back. No, it doesn't work that way. I had to have a very extensive conversation with my son just so he could understand death. The people who are going to catch a suicide are not going to be an administrator or, or I'm sorry, even a counselor or a psychologist. If they're lucky, they'll, they'll, they'll be that one moment that they get to have that kid heard in between. But we need to start something now to train our children to recognize that, hey, you know what, my buddy's in crisis. My buddies, my, my, you know, my buddy just gave me his, his signed baseball from so-and-so. Why would he do that? It's a gift because he's not going to be able to give it to you tomorrow because he's going to die tonight. We don't get another chance. What are we doing now? This is, this is a great plan, but do we have anything that we can, can do or consider doing today? And, and even if it's something that we small add in and start going on and then merge it in. I'm just curious, are we doing anything specific to suicide prevention today?
Okay, please, all right. Mrs. O'Brien and then...
I appreciate the plan and the additional information and I, I think the other, the piece that I'd like us to have further discussion about is also the, the parent piece. I think it is, unfortunately, it falls often on school districts to educate our parents and our guardians and our community members about things that we think they should know are, are happening. I'm, I'm sure that the statistic that unfortunately Mrs. Hall is very versed with, I would bet you that most parents don't have any idea about that. And so, and I hate to say that it should fall on our responsibility to, to do that education because we are already stretched incredibly thin. So I, I say that with knowing there would be one more thing that I'm adding, we would be adding on, but I do think it's an integral part to have resources available. I was, Mrs. Frank told us about an event with the county that I was fortunate to attend that had a piece on, on the suicide prevention and they showed a video about a girl who had it all going on and her parents were surprised as was everybody else. It's on CBS 60 Minutes. So that's important to me and I understand the urgency, but I, I also ask that we need to have a plan. We can't just jump in and, and not do it the right way. So I do ask for a little bit of patience of our parents. I appreciate the questions. I understand the urgency, but we want to do it the right way as well.
So one of the things that I want to make sure is addressed as well is postvention and that was something that I didn't see in here. So postvention is, once a suicide occurs, how do we as a community and as a school district handle that? Crisis response team, you know, whatever it is addressing from a FERPA standpoint to the parents, the community, because here's the bottom line, right? The kids know before the parents, right? Before they come home. The kids all know, they've been talking about it, it's on social media. So postvention is going to be really critical for that. Ms. O'Brien, I really respect what you have to say. We, I came from the East Valley. We've had thirty-one suicides in the last fifteen months. So, and Kay and I have sadly gotten to know many parents like LeAnn who have lost a child to suicide. My own daughter attempted when she was fourteen. She's still here, thank goodness. And yes, I understand you want to do it right, but I think there's also some things that you can do right away. The kid-to-kid thing is huge and important. One thing I think we need to remember is yes, as parents, we need to be involved, of course. Schools are hubs in our community. Our children are in our schools six, seven, eight hours a day, longer if they're in clubs, activities, athletes, that type of thing. So I look at it as a village, right? All eyes on these kiddos. And so we have to figure out in that plan, what are the pieces that you can do immediately and then what's your long-term, obviously, otherwise it's not going to be successful. Making sure, obviously, there's reporting mechanisms for these kids to feel safe to self-report or to anonymously report their friend as well. Those are all really critical things that need to be taken into account because what you don't want to have something happen is someone gets singled out, like we've seen in our district. They watch a video and then they're asked a survey and then the kids don't want to report on the survey because then they're shoulder tapped to come out of class and then someone has snitched on them because they're... And then someone has snitched on them because they're not feeling whatever. Or they go and they talk about how they feel and, or they don't want to report because they feel now secluded or whatever. So those are all things that we really have to make sure that is covered and is taken into. Because we need these kids to feel like they have a safe adult to come to, right? Whether that's their teacher, their coach, the secretary, the custodian, the cafeteria worker, the bus driver, whoever it is. They need to know that every single adult cares for them and that it's genuine. They will see through, they will totally see through it. The other thing I would admonish you to do is to get the voice of the kids, right? We are a really smart group of adults in this room. And we have the power and the authority to make changes. But if we put something into place that these kids aren't going to buy into, it's not going to help. So I would ask that you also poll and survey your students and find out, what are their stressors? What do they feel would help? And have them have some power to put some of those things in place and to lead you through it. Because the kids will buy in so much more when we do that and empower them and help them lead through and help us understand. For example, the young lady down here mentioned social media, right? Social media is how they talk to each other. If we just say, let's not have social media and let's not do this, they're going to be like, oh, not happening, right? We need to understand from their point of view, why, how? How does it work? How do we help support in a positive way? So those, like I said, are all things that I think we really need to make sure that we don't miss the boat on.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Laura Combs. I'm Dylan Combs' mother, who did complete suicide in April from Mountain Ridge High School. So this is a fabulous start. And it's much more than we had when my son did flight in April. I think we have to look at it in two different ways, though. There is the social emotional learning programs that have to start, and they have to start in kindergarten. And I have been a huge advocate of social emotional learning and really giving staff and teachers, administrators tools. And if it is a canned program, then that's what it has to be. A way to implement that with money, resources, people. Because unless you do change the culture where every child knows that they are safe and loved, you can't change anything else. So that's one prong of it. But then there is the second prong, which is the suicide prevention piece of it, which is what Board Member Fisher was talking about. So they are separate and they are different and they do have to look different also, but they do work together. So with the suicide prevention, the thing that I didn't see in this plan, and maybe I'm just missing it, is really with suicide prevention as, I don't know who said it, but it isn't going to be an administrator. It isn't going to be a counselor that is the first responder for a kid. It will be another student. So one of the things with suicide prevention is you have to have training for parents or staff, all staff, every staff member. Not high school only, not just certified, it has to be classified as well. So all staff as first responders for suicide prevention. And there is a fabulous training out there for first responders for staff. And that it also is students. And it has to start, I think it needs to start as low as fourth or fifth grade, where there is intentional, explicit discussions, lessons, learning about suicide prevention, suicide indicators, what they might see from their friends, how to ask for help. There has to be intentional, explicit teaching of it. And I'm, that's the piece that I think I'm not seeing in this, is where does it get down to the actual kids? Where are we meeting the needs of staff who don't have a clue what to do? And truth, and as administrators, how do we, how do we go out and find those resources if it's not going to be provided to us? If it's not part of what we value in our district? So training for parents. And ironically, you have a training going on tonight when this is happening. I would have loved to have been part of that, too. I just, I think that's ironic, but that's just interesting. Interaction, yes, I, yeah. And I think that's awesome. But it actually has to be embedded in their school day, not an optional opt-in, opt-out. It has to be part of their embedded school day. It has to be mandated by our staff to have that training. And that's the piece I don't quite see in this. I think, like I said, it is two-pronged. You have the social emotional learning that has to start kindergarten so that we can change a culture, so that kids know they are safe and learned before they can do anything else. Then you also have to have that explicit discussion and training and learning about it.
So you mentioned a training that was currently available for, for parents and staff. Can you send that information?
I can.
To us?
It's, it's first responder, suicide, mental health first responder.
And does that encompass training for students as well, or is it the, the parents and the staff?
I, I have provided admin with several different options. I brought one with me for social emotional. My district is implementing it and it is a three-year implementation to be fully implemented. And it's expensive, I won't lie. But it's fabulous and I can tell you from personal experience, it is absolutely changing our culture. I'll tell you right now, as an administrator, how many referrals I've had at lunch this year? Five, at a K five. Five. At lunch, and if anybody you guys know, that's remarkable.
We know, that's, yeah, I taught at a K six.
Five. And it is teaching them to change how they treat each other, how they, how they self-regulate, how they self-calm, all the things that I saw in those standards. But I'd be very interested in seeing that. For the, for students, there is a free program, Jordan Binion program that is out of, it's back east, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. That could easily be implemented in our health classes at our high schools. I'm not quite sure middle school, though.
Okay. Yeah, I absolutely agree with you that students need training because as a classroom teacher myself, who did I hear it from first? I heard it from the students. I didn't, sometimes I would notice things with kids, but not always when you've got a large classroom and you're managing a three-rank circus. But it would, it would always be the kids who would come and tell me so-and-so is in the bathroom cutting. And that was a fourth grader.
Jenny, could I ask Laura a question?
I did very, very well.
Yeah. One thing that, just, in just a minute, Mrs. Ordway, that I think will be a challenge with doing training for students is there will be parents who feel that you put this idea into their head. So that would involve some training and education piece with the parents as well. Thank you for being patient, Mrs. Ordway.
Laura, do you know of the, if Tempe School District, because they just did a whole?
Every staff.
Okay, so, and you, so obviously you know who did the training, right? So Laura, did you guys do that whole training for your district yet?
My, for our district, we have had all our admin counselors. We also have PBIS coaches, we're like in, and all of our instructional coaches. And we've all had the mental health first aid. But as part of our ongoing social, it's also been embedded for all staff in that as well.
Okay, so at this moment, I, in time, I know that some of the high schools, when they have, they have their, their health fairs, I don't know what they call it because everybody calls it something different. But the students will ask for certain things, and I know that they have been bringing some suicide prevention. But the other part that I'm interested in is since you guys have implemented this, how did you get that by and from the parents, or did you just implement it? Because there will be hundreds of parents that will say, just like with sex education, you're not bringing that stuff in here. I'm just asking, how did you guys get around, or not get around it, get through that? How did you guys get through that?
So for our social emotional piece or suicide prevention? So we are a K eight district and our middle schools are embedding it within their PE. And we just told the parents that we were doing it. We haven't had any pushback.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'd like to respond to a couple of the questions that some of you had about postvention and then also what the district is doing right now. So. Is it, is it on? Oh, okay, all right. If I do that, okay. So as a former, or a participant who has been involved with the flight team, the district does have a flight team, which is comprised of high school counselors and several psychologists in the district and middle school counselors. And so when we hear about a crisis, it may be a suicide, it may be an unexpected death, it could be a child, it could be a teacher, any sort of crisis, the crisis team is mobilized. And so those of us who are involved will go directly to that school. And they will, will set up centers. And so for, in the case when you've got a death of a teacher or another student, the counselors and the psychologists will go directly into classrooms of the students where, who are most impacted by, by the crisis and provide a little bit of discussion. And then we do pull away and then the crisis teams are set up in different areas in the classroom or on the campus. And so students throughout the day are able to come and talk one-on-one or talk in small groups facilitated by the psychologists and the counselors. Depending on the need of the campus, the, the flight team may remain for more than one day, as long as they're needed and as long as the campus is looking for that support. In terms of social emotional learning, I can tell you that on my campus, we are already implementing a social emotional program. We're currently using All Things EQ on our campus. And so this is something that has just started this year. I believe Boulder Creek High School, I've seen the posters. I'm only there one day a week, so I don't get a chance to really see as much as what's going on. But the same posters we have on my campus, they also have at Boulder Creek High School. And so the, we are rolling things out. And so we are trying to, to implement those things. And I know on my campus, my principal is very interested in embedding that social emotional curriculum, K eight. Because we do recognize suicide just doesn't suddenly happen. We, these are children who don't know how to cope. They have difficulties and we need to teach those coping strategies. And we need to teach them at the elementary level so that by the time they get to high school, and there are so many stressors, that the, they'll have those skills. And we can help hopefully avoid some of the tragedies that both of you have faced.
Okay, LeAnn, and then Ms. Tweedy.
Three things really quick, I won't take long. I do want to, on the Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life, says the high school participation. Just for reference sake, last year at Speak Up, Stand Up, the majority of the kids that were there were sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, not high schoolers. If you're sending high schoolers, you're missing the opportunity because it's sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that are doing the training at the sixth, at the Stand Up, Speak Up, Save a Life. So you need to be thinking about, not thinking, you need to send all of your, all of your junior high and middle school kids to this Speak Up, Save a Life. It's a great event. Top-down, I wrote down top-down. So when we're talking about a plan, I think, first of all, like Laura said, I think it's miraculous that we're even having this after the first two board meetings. You know, in August and September, so I commend you, I want to say something awesome and positive and tell you this is miraculous, that this has happened this quick. But let's keep on that quickness. And while we're making these long-term and short-term plans, there's so much else that can be done in the meantime. The first thing is, none of you knew the statistics. If you don't know the statistics, you can't implore your administration to understand the urgency. So while you're making a plan, there are children dying. Unless you know the statistics and keep it as a priority and you're influencing, you have the ability to create this urgency. Don't wait for someone else, be the leaders and set the pace, set the tone for your district. Tell them this is what we're going to do, period, because it is a priority. We're doing it for opioids, we're doing it for everything else. It's become a national, opioids is all over the place. And yet suicide is now number one. Why is that not a fire under everybody's seat right now? It should be, not a long-term plan. Those are great, but let's do something now, tomorrow, tonight. And it starts with the top-down. When the top buys into it and understands the urgency, the rest will follow. Lead and the rest will follow. Quit waiting for someone else. Learning different ways. I appreciate all of the acronyms behind all the credentials that all of the therapists, the social workers and psychologists have. I don't have that. I'm a mom. But I will tell you, just like your kids, they, we all learn in different ways. And so not everybody is going to learn from a counselor or a PowerPoint presentation or statistics. And you have to be open. While we're talking about funding, I can tell you that from a firsthand experience, I'm banging my head against the wall trying to get into your district. If I can't get into your district, I'm free. Then you're not making it easy to get into your district and educate your teachers, your parents. I'm willing to do parent presentations. I'm willing to do student presentations. And I have referral letters from principals, superintendents, parents and kids who all say, I save lives. And yet I can't get through the door. So while you're making a plan, you've got people who want to help and I can't get in. What does that take?
Ms. Tweedy?
Yeah, I just had a few things on the suicide prevention piece, not the social emotional. And as I was thinking, too, and I heard your question about tracking students. And I guess my question was, I mean, how do we even identify who's at risk to begin with? I mean, I mean, you'd have to identify them before you would track them. And, and so in preparing for this evening, I went, and being a teacher, and I did, I talked to a ton of teachers, most of my friends are teachers. And I think one of the things that we think about is first identifying, but then once you have identified, what do you do? And I think I was trying to go there in my questioning about the counseling. One thing to maybe exhibit warning signs, but I was thinking somebody would be trained to decide if somebody were suicidal or just a perception of a student that something's off or a perception of a teacher who has no specialty in mental health. And then what do you do once you identify somebody, whether you're a student or a teacher? Because I talk to teachers all the time. We're trained to make phone calls to parents and report things we know for a fact that we can observe for a fact, right? We would never give an opinion about a behavior, what that meant about a child. And then the same thing in this, if a student actually wrote a note that said, I'm going to commit suicide, well, I would be comfortable calling a parent saying, we saw this note. I wouldn't be comfortable calling a parent with a gut feeling. I mean, because we don't do that, we just report what we object. And so teachers don't know what to call and say to parents if they think something's wrong with a student. I don't know any teacher who would be comfortable making that call. I don't know any teacher who would be comfortable making that call. Well, and that's what I'm saying, so like, to me, a prevention plan would look like that. How do we identify, then what do you do, then who calls the parent, then how do they access mental health services? Is there a weight on, and that's what I wasn't trying to talk about foster care, I was trying to determine if there was a weight at the schools with the counselors and if all schools had that access.
How do we create that safe environment? Because I will tell you, part of the reason I knew that there was an issue with my son is because two teachers from his, one from his current school and one from his elementary, and he's a senior, so this is a long time ago, they saw something that he had posted on Facebook and they contacted me through Facebook to look and question. So they felt safe with me to be able to do that. So how do we create an environment where our teachers are safe to do something, to say something, to speak up without the, there was nothing specific, it was a feeling that they said, hey, something's up with Barry. You need to go, you know, is everything all right type thing? How do we make sure that all of our teachers feel safe to be able to have those conversations with parents? Everybody, and I understand we have to be worried about FERPA and we have to be worried about every next legislation that comes through and all these undefined, you know, is bullying defined? Nope. You know, we have to worry about all that. But how do we make our environment safer enough to where our teachers can engage in this way? And I don't know the answer, I'm truly asking that question.
Okay, go ahead. And then Mrs. Combs, you're next.
I can tell you that at Goldwater, we started a process this year where we use a lot of the Google Docs, but we came up with a social emotional alert where if a teacher sees a concern about a student, they fill out this Google Doc immediately and it goes to the counselors and it goes to the assistant principals and then one of us responds. We go and get the student, we do an assessment, we meet with them, we call the parent. We also work a lot on building relationships with our students and we talk to our teachers all the time about if there's something that you see or hear that isn't right or off, you need to alert someone and they're very good at that. Even the paraprofessionals bring kids right over and we stop what we're doing. We also monitor those students and we meet weekly and we go over the, the Google Doc and we track how we're, interventions that we're doing with students, what the follow-up is. And then we also email the teachers and say, you know, Suzie might be having a difficult time, we are monitoring her, we have resources in place for her, if you see something else or if she needs immediate assistance, contact the psych, the social worker or the counselor. So we are making gains in that way of constantly monitoring students, but also setting up very easy referral systems. And it could be even things like their grades are slipping and we still put them on that sheet. It isn't just behavioral or observations. My opinion is we don't want to put that burden to call parents or have teachers call parents because there's many times where other issues come up in that phone conversation that now needs more attention or they need immediate resources. They may need to come into the school, we may need to do a Southwest referral, we may need to call the crisis team, we may need to say, here's all these other options for you, please get back to us. We may find out that they've been hospitalized or that they've gone, you know, that they're already getting outside treatment. We write on the spot, say, please sign, sign a release of information so that we can start communicating with the outside providers and work together to come up with the best, safest opportunity for the student to be successful. When they do return from the hospital, I think this came up before, we try our best to have reentry meetings if we know that they have been hospitalized or if someone has shared that with us. Before they come back to school, we try to call a meeting and say, what is the safety plan? What is the medications? We get the nurse involved. If applicable, we do a 504 plan, we do exclusions and exemptions, we say maybe now they need an IEP plan. We've, we've done multiple other things depending upon the student's individual needs and what's going on with the entire family. Lots of times it ends up being more of a, the whole family needs assistance in some way and if we need to hand off to outside providers, that's what we do. But that referral tracking process has helped us a lot this year, really start to hone in on some tier-two interventions right away, including support groups within the school that might do for whatever issue.
That sounds like something you're doing specific at Goldwater. Are we doing it at other schools as well? Are we doing this just while?
Yeah, I can address a few things. I'm Beth Sanders, I'm, I've been a school psychologist in the district for 33 years. I've been at Deer Valley High School, I've been at O'Connor High School, I've been at Mountain Ridge High School. I'm also a mom. We, we have a similar process, I can tell you this year. I've been at Mountain Ridge, it's my 23rd year, and the increase in the mental health needs are so concerning. Today I was with a student for six hours, we had the mobile crisis team come for two students today. Both went to immediate hospitalization. We have written, I think, 16 or 17 student safety plans already this year. We've had mobile crisis on our campus, I think at least seven times. We sent mobile crisis to homes at least three times. I'm, I'm glad we're having this conversation because I agree with everything we've been talking about tonight and we have some things that we're talking about on our campus as I feel like I'm only one person on that campus. I'm one for 2,400 students and we have five amazing counselors and everyone works together as a team from our custodian, you know, to our, our principals. We have, I think we have an amazing staff. I've felt that way about every high school I've been on though. But this is certainly an epidemic as you've been talking about, as we've been talking about tonight and we do need immediate intervention. Today, today's, today's intervention with a student was with a, a parent and a student present. We were doing a threat assessment interview with the student, we needed a parent present and it morphed into not a threat against others, but a child who'd been thinking of suicide weekly for a year and her father did not know. She also came out that she was lesbian in this conversation, her father did not know. We dropped a couple pretty heavy things on this parent today, but that child needed support. So the things that we're seeing are alarming and concerning, so I think the more conversations we can have, the screeners that we can have in place, I know we're talking about some things, Teen Lifeline, as most of you are aware, Teen Lifeline will come in and do free workshops and they have various things that they will look at, suicide ideation as well as anxiety and depression. But as you guys know, you know, you moms, the kids need coping skills, they need to learn coping skills. And I agree, it needs to start in kindergarten and how you treat each other and how you deal with situations because not everyone's going to get the first place ribbon, you know? We've got to understand how to deal with life and situations.
Ms. Combs, I think you're next.
My question would be, I had a psychiatrist, but my question would be, have any, and he had a 504 and I met with the teachers, have the training or the, I don't know what it is, not see, it very well, but he had a 504, act reason, as, less as a district, about all of our schools, inequities that are happening at the schools, I would, that the other schools might not have that same thing. Why?
So that protocol then, it needs to be standardized across our schools. And I, I'm sitting here thinking fire drill and I'm thinking of all the things that we have and a protocol that we're trained on as teachers. So if there's a fire, we don't even have to think about it, we know what we're supposed to do.
That's right.
And, right, and, and with something like suicide, I mean, as a teacher, I might look at a kid and go, something's off or it seems like something's wrong, but you don't want to make that phone call to a parent, you know, because it's, it's natural to think, am I overreacting, am I seeing something that's not there? But if you had a checklist, surgeons have checklists that they go through. If you had a checklist, you go, okay, check, check, check. Okay, this isn't my, my perception, this kid met all these things on this checklist, I need to, now I know what I need to do next and the next step is very clear. At a K-6, we had a, a school psychologist and no counselors, but the school psychologist was split between two schools and she didn't do counseling because she was busy with IEPs and testing. So there were no counseling services. When I was a teacher, I don't know if that's changed, but there were zero counseling services and yet I had a fourth grade girl who was cutting and then sixth grade girls who were cutting or had anxiety and so there were issues they needed help with. But I think what I'm hearing is to start with, with the teachers and a very specific protocol. So, because if something like that happened to one of my students and I missed it, I would feel horrible. And, and I'm sure your son's teachers have many times thought, what did I not see or what did I miss, as, as a parent, any parent would. Yeah. So I think you had your hand raised, you've been waiting and then, yeah.
Hi, I'm Katie McPherson, I'm with the Eckhart Group, which is actually a Midwest-based educational consultancy firm. And I don't know if you heard my boss, Dr. McGee, speak at the Midstates Conference, but I think he would be a great resource for you. He was the state superintendent of instruction for Illinois and then Palo Alto superintendent and put together a very, very successful collective impact project, Safety Night. It was the city of Palo Alto, Stanford University and the school district that came together. Everything is free, he is free, he changed lives and continues to change lives in Palo Alto even though he's not there anymore. And so I see the stress and tension in this room, it's palpable. I met with Dr. Crowe last week because I was so frustrated at what's going on in our own community. We've lost 29 boys and two girls in the last 15 months. So statistically, when we're talking about all of these threat assessments and protocols, we need to know that boys are completing four to one over girls. So when you're looking at school safety and school discipline, suicide prevention is an issue, but it relates to school safety in that it's a very fluid process that these boys are thinking about harming themselves and then coming to school and harming others and then harming themselves. So I think Dr. Crowe put it best that we're all whistling by the graveyard and we're standing and saying, well, we're doing something or we have a plan and we can't stand around anymore. And I think LeAnn, with her passion, you know, is just so courageous to come and I am not a Deer Valley parent, I am a parent on the east side of town that is quickly mobilized overnight, a community of mayors, police chiefs, faith leaders, overnight. I, I, I will do it for you for free. I feel like this group right here is in a very sweet spot that you have not had what we've had, you have not experienced what we have and these are not my children, they are my neighbors' children, they are all of our kids. And to sit and say, three to five years, kids are not dying, but they're crumbling and then they're dying inside. And so I don't think you can wait. Safety Summit is great, great first step, but the one and done, we've proven, doesn't work. The data continues to say it must be ongoing pervasive education and the skill building that you build in Michigan, we could use it here for our boys. So I know you have the resources, I know there's DOJ money, there's Title IV money, there's Health and Wellness Grant money, there's money, there's people that care, but I can't, I, I am listening to this and I am, I'm just so, I don't even have words, but you don't know how lucky you are that this zip code has not been hit like ours has. And I think you have an amazing opportunity to stick a flag in the ground and say, we're going to be the West Valley leader or the state of Arizona leader in social emotional wellness, K through 12 and post-secondary. I met with Dr. Crasno of ASU, who oversees the Mental Health and Counseling Center. They had 90,000 visits last year, they have 76,000 students. Sophomore boys are returning home, 30% of them, after leaving your wonderful schools because the coping and resiliency skills aren't there. So we can rock academics all night long, but they cannot tie their shoe. They are specifically, boys are struggling with coping and resilience. So I feel like you have the expertise here to be able to mobilize and I don't think we can wait. I think you can be doing parent engagement nights. Utah, the state of Utah has a Safe UT app, they have a Hope Squad app where peer-to-peer mentoring that kids get together, they're the best campaign managers. And my lane in this is really the social media. And I got into this as a former administrator because so many of my students have been directly impacted, not only their brains, but their sleep and their reputations by social media. I'm literally on the road every week speaking somewhere on how social media is contributing to this. And I didn't see anywhere in your plan, training for students, training for parents, training for administrators on signs of distress. Students know at least six to eight weeks ahead of time that a school shooting or a suicide is going to happen and we as adults need to get it together. We have to step in to 2019 and it has to happen now. Thank you for your time.
Okay. And I believe you were next, and then Ms. Tweedy has a question.
I just wanted to also add, I didn't see anything here and I don't know if anyone here is a nurse from a school. I recently spoke with a nurse in another district and she told me she sees on average in a high school, 80 students a day, cutting, self-harm, panic attacks, anxiety, depression. Please talk to your school nurses and ask them what they're seeing because we may be missing a whole bunch of kids that haven't gone in to see their counseling team yet as well. And they may have some really good information to share with you as well as to what's going on, so please make sure the nurses are part of this as well.
And that's where I think we can utilize the, some of the resources that Mrs. O'Brien and I learned about at the County Public Health School Health Office Training. Ms. Tweedy and then, yeah.
I just had a question from anyone in the room who might know. Is there a list of elements you would look for in a suicide prevention? Like obviously there would be training certain people, identifying, is there a standardized list we could look at? I, I would like to see like a list and then I could...
Just the three parts have to be prevention, intervention and postvention. I didn't see anything in here about postvention because it's most often forgotten. So we talk a lot about what to do before, what to do when it's happening, but our issue in the East Valley and what happened in many places is that once one happens, it's four times as likely to happen at the same school. And we continue to just send out a crisis team for one day or two days and say, if you're sad, go talk. Boys specifically aren't going to go up to the crisis team and talk to someone they don't have a relationship with and that's why the training for schools is on.
I've got our emails.
Yeah.
Then I could look at just the...
Right.
I'm trying to figure out...
All of us. Send it to Ms. Taylor. And I'm a mother of three boys and no, they don't like to talk. They especially don't like to talk about their feelings.
Because that's what I've been trying to figure out, is what elements and what is, what, what exact list of what's necessary?
So a rubric, a rubric you could use to assess...
Like to figure out...
Your plan.
Yeah, what you would need to, what you should, what the experts in the field think you should have, what we're doing, what we're not doing and... So if you could send us information on any of that, just so I have stuff to look at.
And then Dr. McLaughlin and then Mrs. O'Brien, did you have a question as well? Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick comment about President Frank's commentary on psychologists being at several campuses. Just to give you an example, I am the psychologist coordinator and I serve a K-8 and a K-6 camp... Just to give you an example, I am the psychologist coordinator, and I serve a K eight and a K six campus. I am supposed to be on the K six campus two days a week. So I am there two-fifths of the time. The principal is there, and then we have a special education strategist. That's really the support staff that's available. And so if we have a kid in crisis, sometimes we have to have someone be called from a different campus or a different location, and it's not always an immediate response. So I think one of the key things to bring up here is adequate support. I think a lot of the people in this room know, we know what needs to be in place for support, but we may not have all the resources that are needed. And I want to pump K to six counselors. Our K to six campus, they don't have counselors. How are we going to prevent, be preventative without K to six counselors on campuses to provide mental health? That's what they do. They go to kindergarten and teach social skills. They teach coping skills. We don't have that resource available on our campuses. And I think it's a very important resource that needs to be thought about.
Thank you. And my comment wasn't a criticism of the K to six psychologists by any means.
No, no, I know that. I was trying to reiterate what you were saying and make the point that...
My experience.
We're not, I can't be available five days a week at that K six campus as it sits currently because we don't have the staffing for that to happen.
Okay, thank you for adding that. Go ahead.
Go ahead. You guys have an MSW on staff, anywhere, in the district or at a school? Okay. Okay, so the reason why I'm asking that is, for those of you who may or may not be familiar, ASU has an internship program through their School of Social Work. And so they have free interns that you can get on your campus. So I would encourage you to possibly look at having those interns come in because that could provide additional free resources for you guys to help implement some of this stuff, possibly.
It sounds to me, based on what y'all have said, that we're doing, we're firefighting. We're putting out fires, and that's all we're doing. We are lacking in the preventative measures, like take the matches away from the kids. I'd like to know what we can do, what our plan is to beef up our counseling. If all they're doing is firefighting, there's still people getting burned in fires all the time. And so we have to, we have to look more to prevention rather than rescue. The other comment that was made, and I just wanted to, before we completely run out of time. I know that we do a student survey every year, and at one point, we were looking at the student survey because we were looking whether or not students felt safe, and what grades they were in, and those safeties. I would like to ask that Dr. Finch, possibly with his team, just review, what are we asking? Is there something additional we could ask? Since we've been asking that survey for years, is there data that we can glean from it that would assist us in seeing where we're at?
Was that the Gallup Poll survey?
Yeah, but we have data from it. And then we, I thought we were also asking him additional as well. So I just don't know if there's something that we can utilize, or if there's something that we can start asking the kids. Because I do believe you're correct, and I'm not sure who said, I know it was somewhere up here, that if we don't have the student buy-in, then we're a bunch of adults just chatting in a room, and the kids are kind of doing this, and we're not doing anything. So if Dr. Finch and his team could, I don't know, maybe give us more information based on tonight. I would appreciate it personally.
So Ms. Sanders, and then Ms. Collins.
I'm going to be pretty black and white and pretty direct, because I think what we need are people. We need more people. I mean, resources, in this case, to me, are equivalent to people. Our National Association of School Psychologists ratio is one psychologist to 750 students. For example, I'm on a campus of 2,400 students, okay? So one to 750 students is the National Association of School Psychologists recommended ratio. So what we need are people. I mean, we have the skills. We are highly trained people sitting around the table. We know what to do. Do we have the time? I'm going to be honest, not always, okay? I'm sorry for your losses. The counselors also have a ratio, I know, that you also are trying to work within. And in my opinion, after doing this for so many years, it comes down to bodies. It comes down to people. We need more people to deliver the services we're talking about. When we start doing these surveys and we start tapping into students, we are going to be opening up a floodgate, which is a good thing, to find out who's out there. How are we going to address those needs? Because that is what is going to happen. We need to have more people. Yes, and we have to be prepared.
Go ahead, and then Mrs. Collins.
I promise, I promise I'm going to be fast. These ratios, we're not trying to pump getting more people for, the ratios are designed for exactly what we're talking about. If you read the NAST statement or you read the counselor's statements, the point is, in order for us to provide positive mental health services, we need that ratio in order to have the resources to do it. Your point of only a campus having a psychologist for two days and having to evaluate kids, that's the only, that's the time I really have devoted to do. And so to go beyond that is, I can't create more time in the school day, the kids go home. And so it's impossible to address that. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Collins, I believe you're next. And then Ms. Tweedy had a question, and then there's a community member. You'll be third in line.
I felt compelled last week to kind of do some research, to look at what the correlation is, why the suicide instances were skyrocketing, in a sense. And it was not necessarily shocking to see, but there is a strong link, according to the CDC, that we're seeing these kids result, not all of them, but a lot of them, to suicide because of bullying and the cultures that are current in our public schools. And so when we're looking at from a social emotional point, the starting in kindergarten, the starting with teaching kids about empathy, teaching kids about how to cope, how to be part of the human race, is, leads up to the fact that when our kids hit junior high and high school, the reality is, we don't have counselors on all of our campuses. We don't have social workers. We don't have access to behavioral health systems. A lot of parents don't even know where to go. A lot of schools don't have the resources. And it's not about always coming to the district and asking to write checks, because that's not the reality of it either. But the other piece of that is understanding that these statistics aren't going away. They're only getting higher. And when you look at between two to nine times more likely students who've been bullied to result in suicide, that was a recent study done by Yale. That should really tell us, it all goes back to that culture. And looking at what we're doing for the kids on the levels that when they get to the higher grades, like you said, they can tie their shoe. That they're, you know, it's not just about the 4.0. And so I found that to be extremely, extremely telling. And the last part here of this is that in these bullying instances, and this was, this was 2017 by Health and Human Services study, 85% of bullying cases on campus were not intervened by administration or teachers. And I don't think that's because they don't have teachers that care. I don't think that's a negative. They don't know how. And the teachers that I've spoken with here in the district just over the past week have said, man, I wish we had, I wish we had better training. And it's true, not all teachers are going to be receptive. Not all teachers want to teach that. And as a parent, I don't want that forced on a teacher who has no passion behind that. But to not, but to say that we have these poor counselors and social workers, we have one to 400, 500 kids, that is insane. Why would you not use your front line of defense, which is your teachers? Because they are your army. Just like in a combat situation, your front line of defense shuts it down. And as a teacher, I were, as a parent, if a teacher called me and just said, hey, Steph, I, you know, I could be really off-base, but I'm super concerned about something that my kid said, I would be forever grateful for that. I don't know any parent in this room who would think that that was a teacher being out of place. I think that goes back to humanity and common sense as a person. Because the next phone call that that could be, could be the one to say, hey, I'm sorry, but we just found your kid. And so I would just plead today, if, I don't know if the district has grant-writing abilities. I don't know if there's a designated person that does that, because not everything has to cost millions of dollars to implement across the board. But if we could focus the training and get our teachers on the front line of defense for that, they're the ones that spend more time with our kids than we do. And that relationship piece is vital. And just being aware that, hey, there's a behavior that's kind of changing. It's different. I think there's, that could spark a conversation that could ultimately save a life. Because really, in reality, our kids nowadays, even on the bullying side, they're, unfortunately, they're dying to be heard. It's just a matter of who's willing to listen. And as a parent, I don't, I don't think that's a chance that we can take anymore. And as a community overall. So I just, I just wanted to put that bug out there. Like I said, that it's, I agree with Dr. Finch. It's absolutely a cultural aspect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tweedy, you had a question?
I was just following up on what we just heard. Could you let us know what the ratio of psychologists and counselors to students is for our district? And then, and we can compare it to the, oh.
Both too separate. One to 450 on counselors, and then what is it on psychologists?
If we are fully staffed, it is one to 952.
So we're...
One to 750.
So we're over, yeah.
That's the national standard as well?
One to 250.
Oh, no, I understand that. You were saying that the standard, the national standard...
Ours is listed as one to 500, two, 750, so it's kind of...
And then could we get some cost, if we were staffed at these ratios, what the cost would be on that, sent to the board? Thank you. Thank you.
Counselors rather than copiers.
No, just kidding.
I don't think they come out of the same budget.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Angela Harbison. I am a parent of four children within Deer Valley, the Mid School District. I want to thank all of you guys for sitting around this table. I really do appreciate it. As a mother of four children in this school district, all four of my children have mental health issues. So I am well-versed in the different programs that are available to my children. I have, I think with the exception of maybe three or four agencies, that I have not utilized in the state of Arizona. I've gone everywhere from Southwest Behavioral Network, Southwest Network, New Hope, Deveraux, Jewish Family Services. I don't know, I at least track after so many. And I came here with one direct idea and kind of got derailed when listening to everybody. But I do understand that cost is one of the biggest factors in any kind of organization. And while I hate that that is the case, I understand that you all sitting on the board do have to think about that. However, when I sit in the back and I listen to everybody speak, and I realize that we are short-staffed on this side of the table, but I have this side of the table wanting to give you guys free help. As a parent, I find it appalling that the free help that is backed by clinical data isn't even being addressed, isn't being thought of to be used. I understand that plans need to go into place. I understand that you all have to have, you know, this is where we start, this is where we end. But when you have the ability to have something for free that's clinically backed, and you have significant data that shows that these programs do give kids a chance, why wouldn't you use it? In the interim, until you guys can perfect whatever plan it is that you want, there's no reason why you can't look at the program that's available, tweak it if you need to. But I think that mental health is the biggest issue that our entire country faces, short of an opioid issue. I also don't think that utilizing one agency is exactly the smartest idea. I believe collectively, just like we are all here, sitting here, talking, that a bunch of different minds coming together to, for one purpose, and that is to make sure our kids make it to adulthood and make us all grandparents. I think that having a lot of brains to give the ideas and troubleshoot is a wonderful idea. I commend Southwest for being on board and providing services for our schools. I am a little bit sad that only certain schools are being addressed. I think that there should be an agency in each school because these people that are sitting here on this side of the table are horribly strapped. They want to provide services. They want to take care of our children. They want to give our children the best possible outcome. And if an agency cannot give enough people to help, why wouldn't we ask another agency to help as well? It's been talked about that ASU provides interns. Why can't that be a viable opportunity? Especially because we're looking at costs. And that is a twofold thing. You get help, and in turn, you are providing that intern with their education. I don't see why that should be a problem. The other thing that I wanted to speak of is the lower grades. My daughter, this summer, disclosed that she wanted to commit suicide. Me having the knowledge, not complete knowledge, not anywhere near the knowledge that you four have, I immediately called her psychiatrist, and I mobilized a team within one hour. And I don't know everything. I run into a lot of parents that don't know everything. And they don't know that there's viable programs available. And my daughter had disclosed some other things, even in elementary school. And it was sort of ignored. And I found out later that she had actually talked to people back and forth. In hearing that there are some reporting and recording to find out if there is a trend with a child, I commend that. I really do. However, I have disclosed four times to my child's school... However, I have disclosed four times to my child's school just this year that she was going through intense trauma therapy. I have never been contacted to be put on any type of reporting. I didn't even know it existed. My children, for four years, were in the foster care system and for four years, they underwent extensive trauma therapy. The school knew about it. I had intensive discussions with the principal who knew about it. Ironically, the only time I was ever talked to about it was two months after I adopted them and was told that I was gonna be taken to, I'm gonna forget the right word, but basically, I think it was trinsecourt, because my child was missing school because he was in trauma therapy. That was the only time that I was ever talked to about it. So I knew nothing about the recording. I, I really commend that and now that I know about it, I'm gonna actually push it when I go to their school tomorrow. Well, they've gone to two different schools, so, and they're both Title I and they both have his program. So I would think, I would think though that um they would wanna track that. I would think. I also question the very first week of school, I fill out a paper that has their, their, my address, my phone number, contacts, who can take my kids out of school. And on that paper also states their medication. And I disclosed everything. And I was never contacted. So that's kind of troublesome to me, that there are signs out there. I put signs out there. Um and as a parent who is starting to learn everything, I was never contacted. Um I think there are parents out there that don't even know as much as I do and they put the seeds out there and nobody picks them up. And that's sad for me. Because I do know my, with my children being in Title I schools, and I know the lack of funding and I know the lack of parent involvement and I know the lack of everything in those schools. It's sad. I mean, if I didn't know anything, when she disclosed to me, and I'll tell you right now, when she disclosed to me even knowing anything, I was destroyed. I caught it in time. It took them four days to tell me she disclosed, but I knew something was wrong and I caught it in time. Unfortunately, other parents haven't. I thank you that I'm learning from you. I thank you. I really do. What you guys are doing is courageous and I thank you. So I really would hope that you guys would learn from that and take the prevention because like Ms. Fisher said, what happens tomorrow when my daughter commits suicide? And there was nothing in place. And yes, we are putting out fires. Sadly, we are. So I would hope and I implore you guys, please, take the free help, learn from it, learn from the people who can understand and empower these people to be able to do their jobs a little bit more efficiently, because they are fighting a losing battle right now. Thank you.
So, so what I think I'd like to move to, and I know there are a few other people have comments and I don't, I want anyone to leave here tonight feeling like they did not have the opportunity to have their say. But I'd like to move to um a wrap-up and then also looking at what are our next steps forward, because this has been a great conversation. This has been a start. I don't want this, and I don't think any, I, I think my fellow board members would agree, this shouldn't be the end. This should be the start and what I'm hearing is um the, the urgency of the matter. Um I'm hearing, we can't wait for a three or five-year plan. And so what, what next steps can we take um very shortly to address teacher training, to address uh may perhaps utilizing the free resources that you've, you've brought to us? Um and training for all staff, for those uh teachers in the classroom and for the students who are really our first responders on that. So um you had something and I think there was another person behind you who had something they wanted to share and then I think, given the time, and Ms. O'Brien, okay, so one, two. Okay. Okay, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Donna Bartos. I have a son who is a new freshman at Sandrodale County. Founder of Bloom Three Sixty-Five. I can share with hope and with confidence to let all of you know that you may not know, since two thousand and thirteen, and Denise knows this because we're in Deer Valley High School, we have been incorporating a seven lesson health education curriculum for the prevention of abuse and violence, which also co-occurs with suicide ideation, bullying, mental health, opioid addiction, all of it. We can't address one issue in a silo. We have to address them collectively because our kids are hurting. Our kids are talking to each other. They're not coming to us. They're not coming to you. They're not coming to all of us and they're not calling hotlines. They're talking to each other. So I just wanted to share that this resource has been implemented in schools for free because we have a one point two million dollar grant over the next two years to complete it. But part of our work is training teens peer-to-peer on how, not only to recognize this, but how to pro, provide support and how to change culture, culture. Building empathy, respect, kindness, safety, communication, coping, self-control, all of the things that we talk about that we want to do. But as adults, when we do this, it's like this. But when they're doing it together and they're changing culture, they can get to that tipping point to stop it. I don't know how you measure hope, Dr. Finch, and when I was listening over there, I sent you a long email, so hopefully you read it tomorrow. Um but I wanna share with you, last week we wrapped up at Berry Goldwater High School. And what we do, that I think is unique to our program, is we give teens an elephant in the room card every day. We all know what elephant in the room means. And on this card, we ask them to write down anything anonymous, any questions that they have, any concerns that they have, any experiences that they wanna share that they don't feel comfortable sharing in the class. And any thoughts, anything. They draw pictures, they, they disclose things. Um and we ask everyone whether they've completed or not to drop it in the elephant bucket when they go. And I just wanna share a couple of the elephant in the room anonymous questions and anonymous comments that we received last week, because it's so important, like you said, and I don't know your name, I'm sorry, to listen. They have the solutions. We have lots of experts in this room, right? But if we're not listening to them, we're not gonna solve the problem. We heard that stress with academics or social media as root causes. But what we're finding, our last seven years of data, that eighty percent of them are saying that those things aren't what bring them down the most, is their body image and appearance. Think about that. And the boys that we interact with tell us, I'm not reaching out for help. Because I have to tough it up. I have to stay strong. I can't reach out for help. So I'm gonna share a couple of these and know that these questions and comments did not go unanswered. We answered them, we provide advocacy, we provide support and we refer to community resources and trusted adults that they have. I feel empty inside. How can I stop the pain in my chest or stop being so depressed? Let's just say someone was sexually abused, but this person is scared to tell someone because they think people will think they are lying and they don't wanna change the image of the person who abused them. What should they do and how can they cope? When I feel depressed almost every day around like six o'clock, I go into the bathroom and cry because I have no one to talk to. And when people ask if I'm okay, I lie and say yes, because it's too hard to talk about. I feel nothing matters in my life. I wish I had known the warning signs before I let the relationship go further. How do I help someone or a friend dealing with depression and who is suicidal? How do you find yourself? And I'm transitioning and I don't feel safe in my school. This is what's going on. And we need to listen to them. So if you wanna see more, I know we wanna have surveys and you wanna know what's going on, go to our website first and see what's going on, because we're capturing that. And I just encourage you all, if you do one thing and take one thing away tonight, is listen to them first. Thank you.
Okay, so um Dr. Finch, uh if you, do you have some thoughts you'd like to share um on next steps? There's been a lot of information shared tonight.
First of all, I wanna thank everyone for coming and also getting the process rolling. As you know, um school safety and all the topics that you're looking at, we're looking at tonight is something that we've been working on for years and are picking up more momentum. I had two thoughts that I wanted to share. Uh we talked a lot about resources. Arizona, well, in particular, our school district has more resources than I've ever been attached to in my twenty years as superintendent. Do we have enough? No. So where do you get resources from the state? Are we talking to our legislators? I am, are you? Um yes, opioids is drawing attention because the governor has latched onto it. We need the governor to latch onto counseling and I think we are getting traction. Um I am talking to our legislators, um in particular, Heather Carter as well. Um uh talking about this very topic. We need more dollars to provide more people. People are the secret, yeah, for sure. More resources, more opportunities, more trainers, et cetera. And this is not just a Deer Valley issue, it's a state of Arizona issue. So I, I encourage you to continue to, to bang on your legislators' doors, because that's what I'm doing and if, together, if they hear the same voice about counseling ratios, for example. I think that you're seeing that on social media, on Twitter. I, I'm a big Twitter fan and I'm seeing that on social media, people are hitting that. I know the counselors uh that uh organization is, and people are starting to hear it because it's starting to be repeated. And so we can talk about more psychologists, more counselors, et cetera, those ratios, um that, that is a um a positive momentum that I think we are gaining. So um continue to help us in that. Um and the last thought was that schools are a reflection of our society. Um and this is not going to be solved by the school. Um historically, schools end up becoming the village, the center of the village that often gets the um the onus to solve the problem, but um as you mentioned, we need to continue to work with the university, with uh the armeers, with our police, um et cetera, et cetera. And so as far as next steps, um as you, we, those are kind of the plan, um the direction that we're heading. Um I'm excited about the direction we're heading and a, as we learn and become better experts, listening to students, better experts, uh working with teachers, training teachers, I'm convinced that if we don't have, if we don't change the culture first, all the rest of this is a waste of time. That's why I'm trying to say we need a plan that has a foundation from kindergarten to twelfth grade, built around social, emotional. And then we put our, the different topics that the lady mentioned, um those need to be on, hung on to that, that foundation. So um I like the direction we're going. Could we go faster? Yes. Uh could we have Southwest on every campus? Yes. That's all dollars. It's in, uh a psychologist total package is eighty-two, you know, eighty thousand dollars. If we want ten times more of that, that's eight hundred thousand dollars. So I'll get you the numbers of what, if we could get the national average, but it'll be in the millions. And so we have to make a choice. Yes, we're number one in academics. We just tied our friends in Gilbert. But we wanna be number one in this area as well. It's going to take people. So I'm excited about what the team's doing, what they're working on and uh and the progress that we're making and thanks again for the community again to keep us in the loop.
So just, um I have some final thoughts and then I'll open it up to any board member who has something they would like to share. So one of my favorite sayings came from my sister, she didn't, wasn't her original saying, is how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So for me as a board member, what I wanna hear or what I'd like to see are three things. We've talked about a lot of different needs, a lot of different things, a lot of different areas where our plan could be improved. I'd like two or three specific things that we as a district are willing to do in the very immediate future. So whether it's implementing one of the programs, whether it's um making parents aware of the statistics, which I learned at the Maricopa County um School Health Office event, were shocking even to me. Three, three specific things that I, I can say, okay, this is what we're doing. If a parent came to me and said, what are you doing now? I, as a board member, would be able to say, we're doing these three things and we're doing them now. So that, those are my thoughts. Um are there any other board members who have something they would like to share before we close the meeting?
I, I, I would. Um I wanna thank everyone for coming and sharing uh their personal beliefs and also the statistics. The information that um, I know Katie's, your name's not reserved anyway. I was looking at Leanne and I almost said Leanne. Um the program that you were talking about, you have that already emailed or you have that, okay. So that might be something to look at. Um I know that Gilbert, uh and I don't know how it's utilized, I don't know how, what their results are, but I know that they have a mental health team. Okay, so you know about that because you're on the east side. Is it on all the high school campuses? Okay. Okay. So, so there are different things that are already in existence and, and where the funding comes from. I think when we're talking about this, you kinda have to forget where the funding comes from and you figure out what um solutions are. I'm, I'm not comfortable saying that, oh, there's three things that we should work on immediately, because there probably are ten. But when we have a long-term plan, a short-term goal, there are things that can happen simultaneously while we're working on the thirty thousand and, and we need to do this. So and best practice, maybe that's what your Google Doc is. I don't know. I'm not a psychologist. I do know that for years, we have been trying to increase counselors, so they are actually counselors and not advisors or whatever they are. And they don't know some days what they are. I know that you guys, it's an impossibility to do what you're doing, but yet you're doing it and we're not taking advantage of the fact that you can do it even though it's impossible. So there's staffing that's needed, there's understanding within staff, within parents, within students. So who, who is the number one, two and three? I don't know. And I don't know that any of us can make, make that decision right now. But if we're looking at all of these programs and all of the needs and somehow maybe have, and, and I'm only throwing this out here, have a task force or something along those lines that do not bring in, um it's kinda like uh a nonpartisan thing. We're here for kids, so we start with the kids first and where is that gonna end up? But not so big and not so long that it takes longer to see what the name of the task force is than it does to get a result. So there are some things that could happen now.
A steering committee? Okay.
Something like that, but I mean, we've gotta process it overnight or a couple of days and come up with something that doesn't throw this plan anywhere. It just enhances it and perhaps we could be um working with the cities, even though we have five cities to work with. But I'm just saying, we could make it as big or as small as we want, but what we need to do is remember that what we're dealing with are the kids. And, and, and do it right, but do it now.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ordway. Other thoughts from other board members before we close out the meeting? Ms. Tweedy?
And then I was thinking as we go forward and I think part of the reason why maybe it sounds, or at least to me even, when I'm thinking offensive, non-offensive, realistic. We have to separate um the conversation with social, emotional programs and suicide prevention, because I'm gonna wait three years to prevent a suicide or improve doing that. Sounds outlandish. But having been on campuses that implement a new curriculum or a program, yes, three years and you train it and it rolls out and then in a district this size to get everybody doing it, that's realistic. So I'm thinking, you know, this year, how do we improve identifying and getting them in services quicker and, and maybe you do improve every year. But three years and I think that's maybe, I think we're the conversations breaking down and I think if we could separate those two a little bit and when we have our conversations. Thanks.
To ask, kinda answer Ms. Frank's question about what are the three things that we're doing right now. Uh one is training, training, training. Um again, driving the training down to the staff of our, you know, our four thousand employees. Uh the second thing that we're doing is trying to get fidelity in the social, emotional programming, so we're consistent, so it's um throughout all levels. That's going to take time, again with thirty-eight schools. And the last thing that I think that's immediate that we're doing today is we're changing our suicide protocol. Our flight teams, our assessment tools, our reporting tools, like what you're talking about. So those are three immediate things that we're doing today that are all headed in this, the train has left the station, but we still, I want a plan and yes, it will be looking backwards and looking forwards on the things that we're doing. Getting better, getting faster, getting quicker, getting more depth and equality and equity in the system, so that we can reach all the, all the students. So those are the three things that we're doing today.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. Ms. Fisher?
Just because I really, I see a lot of times.
Just because I really, I see a lot of times we have these meetings and then two years go by and what happened to that conversation? So I want to reiterate some very specifics and possibly have them as requests, whether they're for information or something. We have a wonderful plan here. I see that our staff has done a wonderful job at long-term planning and even some of the interim. It is. It is. Probably because I have a cold, sorry. But just based on tonight's conversation, I would like to have information on why aren't we using the free resources that we've heard about? We've heard of two tonight, and I know that there are multiple free resources out there. One of the things that, as a board member, I have always pushed, and I pushed it when I worked in administration, was finding where those resources can come, what free resources. I know there are many school districts that look to drive their free and reduced lunch so that they can get additional Title I funding, and I've never seen Deer Valley do that. Many, many years ago, I had someone from a school tell me, "You need to apply for free and reduced lunch," and I said, "I would never qualify." And they said, "Yes, you will, your son is on DVD, and we need you to apply because he does qualify based on his disability." So there's a lot of things that parents don't know about until somebody tells them, and they benefit the school and somebody tells them. So that goes into my next one, not only what free resources are we not using, and maybe not even identifying to be used, but what resources could we potentially seek to help us in having the resources to pay for additional counselors or additional services? Because they're there. It's just a matter of thinking out of the box, and whether that's a drive to the free and reduced lunch so that we then capture the federal dollars in title funds, or whether it's looking at grants or other additional opportunities. I'd like to know what we're doing to find those funds. Then the other thing I heard tonight mentioned was parent engagement nights. We used to have parent engagement nights for special needs kids, for special education, things that would help parents with how do you, how do you transition a special needs student from, you know, elementary to junior high to high school? Why don't we have something similar to that for, in general, parent classes? And whether it is that we have staff that can do it, or don't, or we utilize our parent network? We have, if we have 34,000, what's our student count right now? 35,000 students, I guarantee they have parents. And grandparents, and how do we utilize them? I spent, during the love of our schools this weekend, I spent hours with a PTA mom, and we were talking, and she says, and I told her, "Well, I never know about this event." And I said, "I gave her my personal number, I said, 'You call me. My kids aren't in your school anymore, but I'll come down, I'll do face painting, I'll do stupid stuff with your kids, all." We are not, we have such a massive resource and we're not tapping it. So I'd like to know why those parent engagement nights went away, and that might take a little bit of, somebody probably knows. And what can we do to bring them back? Even if it's not staff, if there's a free resource, maybe we utilize our parent network. And then the final thing I really want to get on the, to reiterate on the radar, is free interns. Interns are free, interns rock. They're like, they're like, I don't know, they're like children. You get to just make them do stuff, and you don't pay them, and you make them do more stuff, and they're happy to do it because they think they're going to get an ice cream sundae at the end, and they get an education. So if ASU, I guarantee if ASU has an intern program, so does NAU, U of A, GCU, I guarantee they do so. What are we doing to capture these interns and best serve our students? Additionally, Goodwill has a Goodwill worker program where we can utilize them. There's so many companies, I'd like to know what we're doing to capture those resources. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. O'Brien?
I guess I'd like to have, to know when we could have a follow-up discussion, so that there's a date on the calendar, if Dr. Finch could let us know in the, you know, I guess in the update, I don't know what date it is anymore, next week maybe? Sorry.
It's October 30.
Thank you all. Maybe next week when we could look at hearing and talking about this again so that it does stay on our radar, and we are marching to achieve the goals while setting up the plan. I appreciate everybody coming and sharing their stories and their thoughtful comments about what is a very difficult subject, and I do want to say that one of the things that concerns me about some of the discussion is that these situations, our children are not widgets, and the situations are not the same every time. It's not always a box you can check off, and not every parent is receptive to that phone call. I've made that phone call to a parent. She no longer speaks to me. She didn't take the phone call seriously, and she quit talking to me. So it's, it's hard, and I want us to get trained, but I also want us to acknowledge that it's not just as easy as training people. And parents at engagement nights, they don't always come. We want them to come. I had a conversation with somebody who was doing them, and they stopped doing them because one or two parents is not enough for the resources expended. And so, again, I'm thankful to have everybody around this table and have this conversation and move us forward on this topic. But I don't want anybody to forget that it's not always the same every time, and it is hard, and not everybody is receptive to that phone call from, whether it's a teacher or a friend or a psychologist. So we need to do some serious training and support for everybody.
Something in regards to that, it's one short thing.
Go ahead.
I, when I'm presenting to the kids, yes, it's hard, but I always tell the kids, "Put the friend before the friendship." You have to do the same with the teachers and the parents. I'm sorry it's hard, I'm sorry that you lost a friend. Two of Andy's best friends watched him put a gun to his head a week before he shot himself because they didn't know what to say or what to do. Put the friend before the friendship, put the information, quit worrying about who we're going to offend and who we're going to upset, and let's save lives.
I don't disagree with that, I just want to make sure that we're still talking about the fact that it is a difficult thing, that's all.
I think, what, Mrs. O- I think what Mrs. O'Brien was also saying, and forgive me if I'm putting words in your mouth, is that it's not a one-size-fits-all, that, you know, you have a protocol and a checklist, and those things are useful, but each situation is different. And I know personally, I dealt with, when my children were teenagers, I dealt with friends, one young woman who swallowed pills in front of her father, and I had to be the one to call 911 because he wouldn't do it. And then another situation where I took a young lady to the emergency room who was suicidal, and her mother said she's being overly dramatic, and thank God the girl was over 18. So some people will be receptive, other parents may be in denial, that's not an excuse or a reason to not give the information, as you've said. But I think what Mrs. O'Brien was saying is that it is a difficult situation, and it's not a one-size-fits-all, and I hope that is an accurate. Okay.
I've been on the other end of the phone call. My brother-in-law committed suicide a year ago, so it's, I would have rather had a different phone call, so I think you, I'm not saying we shouldn't do the hard work, I'm just saying it's not a one-size-fits-all for everybody.
Ms. Tweedy, do you have some-
I was just, I was saying with teachers, I think too, training how to have that conversation. You don't really know what to say when you call someone, so.
Okay. Go ahead. Okay, so I'd like to, in closing, thank everyone very much for coming here tonight. Also, at our next agenda review, we will be looking at a future date to continue this discussion. I think all board members have expressed, we don't want this to be, okay, we had a great discussion tonight, and then what happens next? It doesn't go any further, so our goal is to continue to make this a priority, so we will look at that at the next agenda review next week. If there's nothing further, I would need a motion to adjourn the meeting, so.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you again, meeting is adjourned.